So I have a vast interest in this, not only for myself and my projects, but also for the community.
Thanks Leonard. And then Sally?
I'm Sally Davis and I'm with the Healthy Places Healthy People project and we're working with nine communities in Eastern Agency. And to increase physical activity. And we're excited to be working with Crown Point. We've worked with Crown Point on other projects and it's a really good place to to work with the community. And when we found out about what Daniel was doing, we got really excited about it because it is sort of the boots on the ground of the kind of things we're promoting. And all nine of the chapters we're working with as well as Crown Point Agency. We have tribal resolutions from them and letters of support and we were going great guns until COVID sort of slowed us down. But this is a really good way to do what we need to do when we can't go face to face and be in the same room. So thank you for setting it up. Thanks Atilla and Daniel.
Nice to work with you again Sally.
Thank you Sally. Sarah, do you want to do a brief introduction?
Hi, my name is Sarah Yonke. I worked with Dan at Navajo Technical University, previously the nursing instructor and director. I'm now at UNM Gallup, teaching the nursing program and I thought I'd come and help Dan out and I also work as a provider in Crown Point IHS in the ER. And I think this is an awesome project because preventing some, you know, diseases, chronic diseases, this is where it's at. So exercise and health is medicine, even though it's not, you know, tangible pill, but it's definitely something that that we need in the community. So thank you for having me.
Yeah, thanks for coming back Sarah. And I think now with COVID, you know, it's especially important for this type of project to exist. So again, thank you everyone. Mr. Benali?
Hello everyone. My name is Sheldon Benali. I'm also with the UNM Healthy Places Healthy People Project. I'm calling in from Shiprock. So my office is actually remote right now and I'm working with primarily with the Herfino-Nigizian Council Chapters for this project. So thank you for having me.
You're welcome. And last but not least Katie, Mary, can you unmute?
Hello everyone. I'm Katie. I'm a student at NTU majoring in business administration. I like this project because it helps my community Crown Point. I live in the parent country, so I'm very interested into this project.
Thanks Katie. And then we have three other members who aren't here today. Two of them, they just had a newborn, Felicia and David. So they've taken a step back, but they really helped with a lot of our Venza mapping. And then we also have a community member named Roderick Yazi who's working right now. So this was kind of a tough time for him, but. That's everyone at the table. We welcome everyone who's here to be a guest and visit, but if you want to chime in with anything, feel free. You have all of the notes that I had sent out last night. Hopefully that really describes a lot of the discourse around each trail. And while they're each individually going to be talked about, I'd like each of you to really think about connectors and how this net, each individual trail could serve a grander network. You know, how do they tie in together? And that could be with things like signage, how do we do health? Do we think about low impact with the BIA track, high impact with TP and the medium with Mesa, you know, those types of things is the kind of discussion we want to have. But really bring your own expertise into it as well. If you want to have a view of health, you know, what ways can we incorporate that? You'll see within that document, we talk about things like workout stations, but then also things like mental health, being able to see scenery, get out in nature, things like that. So that's what we're going to be discussing today. Today specifically, we're just going to be focusing on Mesa Trail, which was in the workbook as the first trail. So we're going to pull up the Google map, Attila, if you won't mind. And then we'll kind of look at it from both the Google map form and then the drone footage. And then from there really start discussing and breaking it down from there. So.
Okay, I'm gonna share the screen here. One second.
As this is happening, it's important to know that this all happened right when COVID came. So we were supposed to be doing this around a table and doing a work session. But since that's not possible, that's why we're here today. So we appreciate everyone being able to make those accommodations.
Cool. So can everyone see the Google Earth map?
Yes.
Okay. And just to personalize the conversation, Sarah, my wife is the ER critical care residency coordinator for Presbyterian Hospital. So she's been working through all this, trying to do remote teaching for that since March with ER and resident. So I envy you trying to teach when it's crazy in the hospitals. Alright, so this is, this is a loop of the Mesa Trail based off of the data I found, provided from the various maps. So just did an approximate map on that. And if you can click it back on, it really starts off here, off of these housing areas. Past the sports fields here, which apparently there's a walking access here, traveling east along this loop. And then down through this other, near this other housing area here. A little better on the map. And there's all kinds of, within this is all kinds of game paths, livestock paths, footpath, ATV paths, all kinds of stuff. We've got to decide, is that something you want to keep open or keep closed? Then the path comes down along here. There is another logical access point. Right here, this neighborhood access that could get people off the residential streets and connect them right to the potential trail system right here on that access point. You can improve that. This is a place we might have signage for Mesa Trail Loop as an example, then a directional sign here and we'll cover those more in a second. And then the loops kind of overlap here. And then we go a little bit south and we have a, we call these lollipop loops in the trail business. Because they kind of, you know, start with a stick and go back to the lollipop part. And there's a number of, you know, this number of curves in this where it could go this way or it could go that way. Depending on the, what's better resource wise. So we have to, before we make decisions here is I think the first thing I'm thinking is what classification is this? And I'm going to pull that form up in a minute. And the next thing we're going to do after we talk about this, we'll show the drone footage of the flyover. So you get a sense of it. And then we're going to pull up our classification documents, look at that. And then we're going to pull up the Trail Development Workbook and talk about the amenities and improvements we think they should have on there. So for example, someone pointed out that they liked finding shells up on this here somewhere, one of the comments. So is there a need to interpret, you know, shallow seas from some period in the past, geologic interpretation of what that means? But also it's a cultural interpretation, the value of shells in ceremony, whatever else. So there could also have room for interpretation on Mesa Trail. Well additionally, we gotta think about, is that, is this a connector trail that we want to have from here to connect the end or is that too much? Or we want people to always come in through here to access that, some of the questions. So that's the, the big thing looking at, and we can zoom in, we can zoom in pretty good on this. This is 2016 photography. So we can get a sense of what that's looking like. I'm going to go now to the video. Yes, hang on a second. Let me stop that. Let me stop it Leonard. Okay, go Leonard.
Yeah, you may want to know that there's going to be a water pipeline coming through. It's right on the south side of the housing there.
Okay, let's come back to that. Hang on a second. I'm going to escape out of this and go back to Google. Okay, so pipeline over here?
Go down a little bit more. Some more.
Go down south?
Yeah, south.
Okay.
Keep going.
Pipeline here?
Where's your cursor at?
Down here at this point.
It's kind of like the middle where it kind of narrows.
Oh, up in here.
Some more, up some more. Right about, a little bit more up, right about there, a little bit lower on the south side of the housing area.
South side, okay, down here some then maybe.
Yeah, what's going to happen is they call it the Bistrot Beaking Water Line. It's going to shoot out of the water gallop, water line from Shiprock to Gallup. At Twin Lakes, it's going to shoot off towards the east and it's going to go through Coyote Canyon, Standing Rock, Nodish Kish. And it's going to come to Crown Point and it's going to go right on, on the south side of these houses right here.
Okay.
So they already did the cultural study for the route. So they may have some information. But just to let you know, it's going to cross right in that area. It's going to go to that highway on the east side of your cursor.
Chaco Boulevard here?
Yeah, it's going to hook up to there. The idea is to hook up to the tanks, the chapter house and. So just to let you know, that's what they're planning through. They shouldn't interfere with the trails. I think their water line is going to be about four feet deep.
Okay. Oh wow, alright. Interesting. And so that actually, you know, the water line could actually be a trail surface itself if they improved it enough. A lot of times when there's limited public access in places, things like transmission lines and water lines have become trail corridors if they're designed right.
Yeah, they may even help us out with the steps, stairs that Daniel was talking about.
Alright, so let's shift back to the video here. Everyone's on the, everyone can see the YouTube screen here. So.
I don't see it, but just to let everyone know, where this starts is where it lollipops in. So it doesn't get the full back area by the housing, but you'll be able to get the Mesa part of it.
And I can pause, you can talk about it.
So basically, we're starting where it lollipops. It's going past the housing to the left. That's where you'll see where Leonard was talking about where that water line is going to go happen south of it. But basically, this is where you're kind of veering or driving back from the housing where Atilla said there would be an access. It's going south from that view, where, right where it's getting ready to lollipop. So you're going to be able to see that bottom loop within this.
Okay.
Well, you'll see there's a lot of intermixing trails. If you go right to the right one, that's where I was saying how it veers off. And then you could go down towards the church area. And then it kind of goes down the Mesa. So that could be, yes, that could be a way we could veer off and then make it, you know, add different types of workout stations, whatever it might be long term. So there's opportunity right there. Otherwise, you would just go straight and it looks like a lot, there's a lot of hills within this area. So there's probably a lot of mountain bikers in the area. We got some feedback that people like to walk their dogs in this area, but it's really kind of seclusive. Where it's kind of hard to access, but it has a lot of trails in place.
So there's a lot of ATV activity here too. That's pretty clear. Those are the ATVs, UTVs, four wheelers that are in this area here. Again, this is four year old footage that was taken, but that, no, that's just pretty, this is recent footage. This is a video guys just did. So someone's been out here with ATVs.
Yeah.
So question is, do you want to close? That's a question for the group. Do you want to close these kind of areas towards motorized recreational use to have it non-motorized? That's a discussion.
Yeah, and you'll see one of the comments mentioned the block, the blocking of the vehicles.
Yeah.
Towards the housing, they have a big old blocking blockade right there. So that could be a strategy to kind of cut it off. That was one of the recommendations from a community member.
Okay.
So here, as we're going south on the drone, we're really hitting the top of the Mesa. So as you go to this area, you're really sitting atop, atop the town. So you'll be able to see off into the distance. It has a lot of good views. One of the members, as you take this left, he was saying, deep into the distance, you could see an old monument sticking out of the ground. It's like a big old rock. You can't really see it from this drone footage, but this is going back towards the town in NTU. And then you, again, you could see some nice natural trails. They're about three feet wide, maybe two feet in some areas. But there's different trails. So if we have to reroute these trails for cases of flooding, whatever it might be, at least we have options where we could kind of figure out how to reroute. But it's really scaling over the entire Mesa. Again, that's going south towards the churches to the left. You'll see some of those trails that veer off right there into the upper left hand corner, which goes down to the church trail and then that main road. And then this is the loop back towards where we're getting to the end of the lollipop. So in the upper left hand corner, that's where you see the trails to the churches and you could kind of see the overlook, I'm sorry, the left hand corner, Atilla.
Oh yeah, okay, over here.
Down there, off of the Mesa even, all the way into the upper left, yeah, down there. Those veer off to that road that loops around to Route Nine and then those churches. So you'll see a lot of people walking in there, connecting up towards the West Mesa Housing or whatever it might be. So that's where it veered off from the beginning of the video.
How many trails climb the slope to get to the top of the Mesa? And how steep is that Mesa?
They have about two. There's areas where the incline is really great and you'll see a lot of erosion. But that's something that we'd have to figure out to switch back. It's possible because like I said, there's probably about two or three different ways up.
Okay, and people do use those, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Daniel, you said monument. Do you know what kind of monument they're talking about?
I don't. It was really past Towering House. It was kind of in the distance going towards Borrego Pass. He said there's a monument out that way that you could see this big rock standing up.
Did he mean the towering house or?
It's possible, but I thought it was something even further in the distance. See far. Yeah. But you'll notice along here, there, there is opportunities for workout stations. That was something that was mentioned, you know, having workout stations every 200 yards. Maybe there's different, you know, veer offs where we could do different types of obstacles. There's opportunities within this trail to do it, but it's important to note that this is, there are a lot of slabs of rock. Me and Leonard had a hard time doing our posts when you're doing the work session booklets and finding an area where we could, you know, post something up. So that's something to keep in consideration. And then finishing the loop, it really comes back to that lollipop. So again, kind of going towards the outskirts of Mesa. You'll see how it kind of goes down to the left. You'll see the different heights and it goes back towards that lollipop. That's where you see it right there. You see the access down into Sun, what is that, Sunshine Estates or what's your neighborhood called Mary?
Sunnyside.
Sunnyside, yeah.
And this is kind of where I propose that connector right here, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Sunnyside. Alright, let's go a few more seconds on the video. So this does give, you know, it shows you there's so many routes up here. Question is, do you restore and rehab ones and just keep a main, a main loop through that you're going to maintain and focus as your trail network?
Right. And then that's where it kind of figured eights out, which then leads back towards the housing if you keep on going straight. And then it does a big old loop around too. So I know when we were talking to people, some people didn't even do that whole loop on the Mesa. Cause they were afraid of dogs from Sunnyside or, I'm sorry, Mary's neighborhood. So a lot of them just kind of walk towards the water tower and even extend it beyond where Atilla was talking about where we could keep on going left.
Okay, so any questions on what we saw so far from folks? Alright. And so it looks like there's a, you know, if I looked at this a little closer, I can see that there's a couple of, I mean, this is, this is a steep route here going off the top.
Atilla, we're seeing your team meetings.
Sorry, I didn't stop sharing. What happened? Are we good now?
Yes.
Okay, so I can see off the top, there's a route coming off of here to the bottom. There's no one come off of here. So they, they could be improved. You could have a reasonable approach to connect that from down below. But the question is.
That's really steep right there, Atilla. There's no way you could go down.
And the question is, it all goes in the back of someone's property. So that wouldn't be a logical place to drop people off behind these homes. So, okay.
You're probably sitting about 50, 50 yards above ground on that entire Mesa there. Yeah.
So we want to, so we want to keep this up on top. So the next question for us to think about is that I did a, I'm going to try to share this trail classification proposal. At our last team agreement call, we thought that there might be three, three types of trails. Everyone can see this sheet here, I hope. Three types of trails that Crown Point would improve. One would be a barrier free trail. That would be, we would in their world call. Someone else sharing that?
I was seeing if I could share it. I wasn't seeing it on your screen, but can you see it on mine?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's weird, it wasn't on mine. Okay. Way to take over. So, so a barrier free trail is non-motorized travel, walking, bike riding, mobility assist devices. And provides leisurely travel. Barrier free trails might be something that could be anywhere from six to eight feet wide. Because we might want wheelchairs to pass. We want people to be able to walk next to each other when they're walking. And there's nothing more horrible than, you know, two people trying to walk on a four foot wide trail and there's no personal space. And we want personal space, but we want to be able to walk and we want to encourage group walking in this. Because that encourages more people to get out if you've got a partner to walk with. So we, wider is better. So barrier free has to be firm and stable and there's no trip hazards. It's never steeper than 5% grade. It's basically an ADA trail, Americans with Disability Act trail. However, ADA does not apply to this, this environment. ADA applies to the built environment such as sidewalks and, and buildings. So we work with the Forest Service Universal Accessibility Guidelines and kind of promote this idea of, of a barrier free trail. The second classification is an improved trail. It's non-motorized travel, provides leisurely outdoor recreation and allows for side by side travel. And incorporates signage and interpretive elements and the first one can as well. So improved might mean that it's, it's more than just packed dirt, but it's not concrete or asphalt. So it might be an example of a crusher fine. So we take the crusher fine materials, the small aggregate and use a stabilizer, resin based stabilizer to pack it down, to pack it. So it's all weather. So if people want to walk in the winter time, this can handle some light, snow removal. It can handle winter travel. It's not going to get mucky and muddy and nasty if it's even, you know, during the spring thaw. So if you're wanting your trails to be all weather, year round use, you know, you have to think about the levels of improvements and levels of maintenance you're going to have. The third one is a natural primitive trail. I see, this is example of the TP Trail and Beyond where people are exploring the canyons and mesas around Crown Point. It's not, they're not designed as active transportation trails or a plate, you know, you're not trying to get to the grocery store or for a loop walk or whatever. But it's like, I want to get away from the built environment. I don't want to get from town. Here's where I can go for that contemplative experience. Mental health benefits, to be with nature, to be in the geology, to be in the natural environment. This is possibly good for the mountain bikers, the hikers, equestrians. But all we're doing here is, is maintaining a 18 and 24 inch wide pathway, which is most of them probably are. And we're trying to say that we will fix the erosion problems and, but there are going to be some hazards and challenges in the trail and built into the trail. Because that's the experience people expect. The one thing that trail planners should be doing at all trailheads. And all communities should be doing at trailheads is explaining to the community and your users what the conditions are like. And we typically, we've gotten lazy with that over the years and we've done a green trail or a blue square or a black trail. And that's great for, for people who know what they're doing. But for people who might have a mobility impairment, we should be telling them that this trail, you can travel for three quarters of a mile before there's a place where a wheelchair can go or climb over. Or it's this wide, this far, it's this steep. So the user can determine based on her or his skill level, whether or not they can do that trail. And that's the difference between planning trails for universal accessibility is we let people know what the experience is, what they will get out of it and what they can accomplish on it. And we're not saying this is green because my green could be Daniel's black trail. So we all have different levels of, of skill and strength. So we need, we need to people knew how to do that. And there's some good examples of that's been done in national park units and other places where, you know, there is a whole picture of the trail and says, you can go this far. Here's a steep section for 10 feet. Here's another steep section and we can work all through that when we get the signage. But basically this goes into the three classes of trails that we thought kind of made sense for Crown Point. Barrier free can be asphalt, but I don't think anyone wants asphalt out there. Barrier free is also a sidewalk. But we're really not addressing trails, sidewalks in this plan, although a separate plan should look at sidewalk connections that are missing to trailheads. It also could be a rubberized track. And for example, the BIA track there, all weather, rubberized is expensive, but it's, it's basically, one example is Nike regrinds. So Nike regrinds all their old tennis shoes and turns it into a surface. So it's, it's soft on the joints, soft on the bones, soft on the ankles. Very weather compliant. So you could actually have a policy that we're going to, we're going to plow our fitness track here. So people can walk year round at this one place. We'd have lighting there and this is the place where we can accommodate, you know, year round walking if we can't do it everywhere. Improved could be asphalt, but it most likely it's like crusher fine crown or slope trail. Any questions on the three surfaces we want to move forward on for at Crown Point? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so back to the map. Can we all see the map?
No.
Yeah, what's going on here? We're going to share. Hang on. Open share tray. Okay. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, so. Last call, someone brought up, can a trail be both improved and natural, have, you know, be different sections? And the answer of course is yes. So looking at this Mesa Trail. Recommendations on what class or classes should this be? Yes, sir.
We need to consider the durability, these trails. I think we're going to have heavy usage, usage. Once the wellness center, the community wellness center opens up, you also have the O D Y Gymnasium Youth, Youth Center. I don't know if you've seen it Daniel, but the heavy equipment, heavy equipment is already in place and they're fixing the, the ground, groundwork. There, so you have two health related buildings. Now, when we had our COPC meeting, I was mentioned that they're going to have a new wellness center building. Now, when we had our L P C meeting, I actually was mentioned that they're gonna have a new wellness center building. That's gonna be going up. So in essence, within T U, you know, you have four major facilities that's gonna be promoting or. Uh, utilizing the trails for their health, education, all participation projects.
So that, that tells me you should be thinking about an improved trail here that's, you know, four to six foot wide on this loop. That would, uh, or both loops that would accommodate heavier. Have your use for physical activity, for health and otherwise.
Yeah, and I know that top loop that you see it within there. They were even talking, I think Jimmy, um, from youth was talking about doing and expanding your trail within that area, so it could be something we end up. Developing on of what they construct, because the, uh, youth center. And then also that wellness center is just gonna be up to the right, if you drag up into that area, there's gonna be that softball field. Um, and then there's the youth center right north of the softball field, and then, uh, right in that area is the wellness center, uh, to the right of the, uh, football field.
Okay, wow, alright.
Um, so, so that's gonna be the area where you're gonna see a lot of the youth activities, the wellness, you see a lot of people playing softball over there. Um, that could even be a parking area by the tennis court softball area, in that area. Um, that's where I see a lot of people accessing the trail, um, as well too, so. It could be a portion, top loop is the, um, open barrier, and then we move over to the improved, because this is where it gets tough, is where it lollipops. Because that's where you have a lot of that granite and the stone.
So you see this more of a, so you see this as natural primitive down here?
Yeah, but improved.
And then improved up here?
I would say probably improved the whole way.
Improved the whole way, okay.
But if it's possible, it could be, uh, open barrier on the top part.
Oh, you mean a barrier-free on top?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, Daniel? Yes. Jimmy Toledo, who works for the, um, O D Y Office of Youth, um. Office. Well, anyway, the youth place. Yeah. They, their land. The withdrawn land that they utilize is that baseball field all the way to the south near those housing. So that land is withdrawn by O D Y. They have a big area, but they're not utilizing, but I guess that's why they're gonna utilize the most of their area for trails. I see. So that area there.
So I, so what we were hoping to, what, what, what the objective and this everyone is, is we're gonna. Um, our, we're gonna probably put together a map show, and here's the improved route, here's the, you know, the barrier-free route, here's this route, uh, connections. And then ask for more community reaction to what we're proposing, so. At this point, are there any, do we have consensus on the idea of this upper loop, as Daniel suggests would be barrier-free? So therefore, people in, anyone who in these areas, or housing areas, or students who would need, uh, of, of activity. Based, physical activity-based walk could do this, and if they're mobility-challenged or using a mobility device, could travel this upper loop. And then the lower loop would be improved, meaning it would be, uh, a more stabilized four-to-six-foot-wide surface. But it wouldn't be the same, it might have some obstacles in the trail because I believe there's some slick rock or rock slabs out here that'd make it hard to do that. So is that, is there consensus on that approach so far from everyone?
I vote green.
Okay, alright, so let's talk about access. How would you get to this thing, so, and if we can put in a, we're gonna put in some icons of access or parking and make notes on this, so. Uh, if we want to do a, um, we're gonna do a trailhead icon. And tell me where that should go.
I would say by the housing and by the corner of the, um, softball field.
Okay, so this would be a walk-in trailhead, right? No parking?
Yes.
So, okay, um. Mesa. And T-head, okay, and then you propose another one would be. Uh, like a parking area here or something?
Well, even where it bends, if that's gonna be O D Y land, um, right there is where the housing from the high school, yeah, right there would probably be a good point. If it's on their land, if that could be a parking type of walk, because a lot of people park in that area for softball and then whatever. And there's a lot of access in that, in that portion, I would, I would recommend that, but I'm not sure about the crew. If anyone wants to chime in.
Yeah, others chime in here, if you know the area.
I was kind of hesitant about the other one that you had mentioned by the housing, uh, Matilla, and maybe Mary knows that about more, um. Of people, I, I'm sorry, the other side, the south side.
Oh.
Sunshine housing.
I wouldn't see that as a public one, I'd see that just for this neighborhood, it'd be a neighborhood access point.
Okay, because I think that's what Mary was saying, was that there, there's some hesitancy of people walking through their neighborhood, et cetera, but if it's just for them, that could be a good trailhead.
Yeah, I, I would not advertise this as say, here's how you get to this trail, this would be, this, this is a neighborhood access point, so it'd be secondary access point. And we can, we can put one there just to show it. And then make a, make a point that it's, um. And I'll, I'll put more text on all this stuff, neighborhood access, um, down here. This is Sunnyside?
Mutual help.
Okay, is that right, Sunnyside?
Me, yeah, Sunnyside on the south side, this is mutual help housing.
Oh, mutual health housing. Okay.
And I would say just for the likes of this first skeleton, those would probably be the th- three best access. But the little trail that goes down to the church area eventually could be incorporated into it.
Okay, so would we ever see a, would we ever think that we'd have parking here, so someone who lived another part of the community would want to drive? And park somewhere around here, I mean, would we want to propose a parking area that could be used by the, these athletic complexes here?
Yeah, you can, but you're gonna have to get, um, permission from O D Y because it's on their track.
Okay, do you think they're considering a, a formal parking area anywhere already that we could utilize?
Well, if they're gonna start, uh, developing a trail, they're gonna have to have a parking lot somewhere.
Okay, so we can just make a recommendation that this should be a joint-use parking area here somewhere. I would think that's maybe one of our goals, but I'm gonna throw ahead and, we're just gonna put this one right here for right now, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then recommendation. To work with, uh, land, uh, developer for, uh, joint-use parking. Okay. Alright.
O D Y, O D Y stands for Office of the New Youth.
Okay. With, uh. Okay, cool. Very nice, alright, so this is already showing as little, and I'll change the colors of the map to show, maybe I'll have three different colors for, uh, improved. Uh, and otherwise, so we can see that, alright, so the other part of this is, um. Do you know, uh, if you've walked this trail, are there areas that are too steep? Um, or badly eroded that will need repair? Or do we want to hold off on that conversation, that we have more field, uh, field review, which I think we'll need to have?
Yeah, I think you need to really be there to see the, the, uh, the terrain in person, because, uh, looking at it from. The way it is now, it doesn't do justice to how steep the, the cliffs are.
Right, yeah, ground truth thing is really important, alright, so then, um, we had a things on, um, amenities. Like benches, shade, signage, public art, trail names. Things like that, so let's talk about benches, if you were walking this trail, are there places we might want to have a bench and/or. Uh, a storytelling sign, a, a wayside interpretive sign?
Uh, for me, I would recommend, um, you know, the three points that you saw within the drone that have the good views. So up towards this bend on the bottom portion, over by the church area, and then, um, on the very south side. Those might be good, yeah, those might be good three areas for overlooks.
So one, one is here?
Yes.
Okay, so. Uh, da, 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 da. Okay, overlook bench there, and then where else? Was it somewhere in here where the joints to, together?
Uh, it's really narrow passing right there, I'm not sure if it's more towards the left, looking towards the churches, so kind of scrolling diagonally left and south. In that area, a little bit further, um, there should be enough space possibly where we could.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay, we can refine it, but you're thinking somewhere down here then, alright.
Because I think you can see all the way to Tohachi in that area.
Okay, so, um, scenic view overlook bench. And do you think you might do, uh, interpretive sign there, telling a story about whatever?
Yeah, and, and, and the other bench, you know, that might be the interpretive sign where it points out towering house, because I think you could see it from there as well. And then the other structure that, that, um, participant was talking about that was way back by Borrego Pass. So there's some opportunities to kind of talk about landscapes in that, in this region.
So this would be the same place we might have, um. Hang on.
I just want to add one, one thing here. That monument or whatever, it's on the east side of Crown Point, about two miles, it's called Towering House, it's a Chaco Outlier.
Okay.
And then on the west side, there's another Chaco Outlier called Mighty Water.
So you can, you can see that from this, Leonard?
What I was gonna say is between Towering House on the east side, Mighty Water on the west side. There was an ancient road, a highway, a thousand years ago, a thousand years or so. And it went right through somewhere in this area that we're talking about. That's why there's a lot of, um, uh, anisazi sites in that area. Where Sunnyside is. A few houses, a few houses were taken down because, uh, um, well, one guy was digging in his yard and. He came upon some artifacts and some skeleton remains, so they took down three, three homes. Because they found a, a grave site there, so that's the reason there's a, a lot of sites there is because. The two major, uh, Chacoan outlier sites, the road between them goes right into that area. Cool. And Daniel, don't have nightmares about it.
For now, I'm gonna put it here, and we can, you know, correct that, but, so west, we're seeing Muddy Waters Outlier. Uh, and then, uh, south or east is Towering House, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Speaking, um, where Daniel was pointing out on the south side, um, the overlook. That's a great place to see all the, um, uh, the features in the surrounding area. Um, you have the, uh, defensive site on the south side, there's, um, the Chaco sites on the east side. Um, the old Public Penito Boarding School on the south side. And Bigfoot's home on the south side, so that place, hey, you can view all these. And that's a great place to have all these, um, lectures and storytelling narratives.
Okay, good, I like that, got it. Alright, so any other amenities that would make sense on, uh, these loops here?
Um, just the signage, I know is a big thing, probably at each of the access points. I had ma- made the recommendation because we heard within the, uh, notes that, um. You know, we, we should name them towards clans as a possible solution. And there's four original clans that I think we could make ties to each of these. Uh, Kia'ani's were typically known as educators or leaders, so I think that would make sense for educational trail, since we have that one here. Um, we might think about using, you know, Bitterwater Totachini for this trail, so this could possibly be Totachini Trail or something like that. But there's four different clans that I think would be a good basis that was alluded to during the listening sessions that could really kind of help tie them all together. And then from there, if we do alternative routes, then we could add more clans to it, but that might be a way to incorporate the Navajo language and then the. Culture as was suggested by some of the participants.
Yeah, so yeah, let's, um, take, take a note of that, because I want to save that for the whole separate conversation on trail names and signage styles, but. Right, I think it's where we want signage, we want to have a, uh, just, I don't think we need to name these, but just, we need directional signage here. We'd need, um, directional signage, um, here. How are you, uh, how are their visitors hanging on their call here, is everyone still okay?
Yes, we're doing okay.
Okay. And you ready to do your own thing now? Make it happen.
Fine.
As you're placing this, Attila, um, one mention that did come up was those workout stations. And there was mention of having different levels, so if we do end up doing, you know, the top part, non-barrier, and it's really kind of easy. We could do the balanced type of workout stations for elders or those people, and then maybe on the bottom portion of it where it's a little bit more rigged, um, rugged. Have the pull-up bars and et cetera, but I know that was kind of mentioned in two spots, this area and then the B I A track.
So this is all, okay, alright, so, so one thing I'm gonna, uh, I'll point out. And, and my health partners may, or, or, uh, agree, disagree with me, but, um, in my years of doing this. I, I feel there is value in installing fitness stations that address, um, mobility or stretching or balance. Those things, but the ones that are geared towards strength and conditioning. Uh, in all my years of doing trail planning, I've have yet to see a, a, a physically inactive person out in public using a fitness station. So I personally think, um, those, those folks can find the gym and find the equipment in their garage. And we shouldn't be using public funding to fund their personal gym outside. But the, the stretching materials, you know, balance, um, seniors, bone density kind of stuff, I think makes a whole lot of sense, so that's. It's a, it's the, that's my personal opinion and view of, of fitness stations, because they're gonna sell the crap out of them, trying to have you. You know, put in the fifteen thing station, and. I've seen them at Mesclor Apache, and after a year, the woods rotting on them, no one's using them. I've seen them in other places where they put them out there and their weed infested in a year, um, happens in Albuquerque, so think long and hard about. Where we put those, and, you know, are there a bunch of seniors who that would use it, so it might make sense to put a fitness station. Uh, for seniors near a senior center, where they're gonna be versus out where they may not get to be, so that's a really. Really study that carefully, but we, for now, we can put them out here that there's some thoughts of, of, uh, fitness stations out along this trail, and we can put those. Icons in. Created those as well. So let's say they were maybe along this section, like a couple of them, right?
I think Daniel would want a heavy bag hanging somewhere.
Will he, okay? So we'll, we'll just pretend there's, you know, there's like three of them along this section of the thing, because if you, I think having them somewhere placed closer together makes sense. Uh, that way, what about the other idea we, we talked about was, uh, contemplative meditative spaces or even kids' play spaces? And I'll cover those. And I'll cover those really quickly. Um, we, uh, there's a lot, there's a movement in the trail world of, um, discovery play spaces along trails. So if we, if we plan a trail, um, that goes to the park and the kids play in the park and the caregiver, um, the caregiver then sits in the park and is physically inactive. But what if instead of the shiny new playground in one space that you could take, for example, along this loop or this loop, and maybe perhaps here you'd have tunnels for kids to play in. And then they'd go further along the trail and find some sort of a rock shelter. And they might go further and find some slides. And they might go further and find a teepee or a fort or something. So the idea is that as the kids exploring, they're actually getting the physical activity in. Not knowing they're getting physical activity because they're really going from one discovery space to another. So that's kind of the idea behind discovery spa, play spaces is these little places of discovery that you design into a place. Now it could be on a major trail item. If the caregiver's got to go to the grocery store and you gotta haul the kids along. Maybe there's a, you know, discovery play zones on that main trail going to the grocery store. So that's just a thought to think about in, in the kind of the emerging development in trails planning for environments is think about discovery play, play spaces. And then we know, also know that, um, the mental health benefits of being in nature shouldn't be overlooked. And, you know, are there any places here that could be a, a contemplative space where you could go, um, and sit out on an overlook or sit somewhere quietly, um, get in touch with yourself and forest bathing or whatever it might be that uh, would get you away from the developed heart. So I have icons for those. If you see a need for a contemplative space on this or any, uh, a play structure. I think we also, the contemplative space made a whole lot of sense out on, on the TP trailer as possibilities for that. Uh, which I think is, is over here, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So different, we'll, we'll look at those all together. So we may come back and say that doesn't make sense here. Too much traffic. Uh, it wouldn't be, but if there is a space on here that you, maybe you can get in touch with, um, ancestors through one of these overlooks, looking into the, the, you know, the Anasazi highways or whatever it is, the Chacoan outlier highways. So maybe, maybe, but I don't know. And that's maybe something that you guys have to discuss internally with other spiritual leaders and see what would work, um, and so forth. But it could be as simple as a bench by a tree.
Right, yeah.
Quiet place.
I think that Towering House overlook bench is too busy because that's kind of facing towards town, but that muddy water outlier might have some significance because it's really just that church that faces that way. I also think that discovery zone space might be a good way if we're gonna be doing collaboration with O D Y and having a shared parking lot. That we have something like that. And I know Diney College is, um, Say Lee Campus, they have cool little, you know, obstacles that you do and you climb on and do, you know, that might good, be a good example where they space it out every so often too. And have different activities, but that might be a good, uh, means to get in the ends with O D Y and, you know, you, you build your track, but then we'll also have this opportunity of discovery, um, space if we extend it going, uh, west. So I think, I think that would make some good sense. And at the same time, provide activities for families within West Mesa Housing and then Sunshine. But I'm not sure if Katie would, wouldn't mind chiming in because she's from the area and, you know, might. I'm not sure if she'd see it as invasive or if it'd be a good community type of thing.
It would be a good community thing, uh, especially collaborating with, uh, O D Y.
So, so Katie, are you suggesting like, so we maybe, so have a discovery play spaces along this route here instead of fitness stations? Would it be better?
Um, yeah, we can do that. We can do both, actually.
I like that because you could actually connect, you could connect here too. So you could have a, you know, a loop, you could walk that and still have access housing. So the kids could have a cool experience along this section. Um, and you're, uh, hanging back. If you're right here under the water tower, Daniel.
Mm-hmm.
Your boxing bag.
I say that because I have a heavy bag at my ranch hanging on a tree. From the chapter side, we've been talking about, um, beautification, uh, concerning the landscape. And not only cleaning up the town, um, taking down all buildings, but also, you know, planting trees, um, maybe somehow we can add that on to maybe get some trees in there. So it'd be part of the Crown Point's project to beautify the, the whole community.
So, so perhaps, so perhaps then you might have a cluster, a, a little pocket park cluster here that could have a fitness station. Um, so, so the caregiver could stretch while the kids playing in the tunnels. And you'd also have a cluster of trees and fresh vegetation in here. So maybe there's a cluster of three little pocket parks along this section.
That'd be great to see something, um, besides dirt.
Yeah, okay. So let me, let me experiment with that here. We could put in, um, let's just put in some nice trees. Um, oh crap, sorry. So we're gonna put in a, we're gonna call that pocket park. Park, um, with, with, uh, fitness and discovery, play and shade. So then I can get rid of these and we'd have a pocket park that show all three of these things on them. What do you think of that?
That sounds good. And there's a lot of space in between the housing and that area. Um, I know there's a trail that runs right along the housing that you could kind of see in the shadow of that water tower. So it does hug up against the housing as well. So there's just a lot of trails we could, you know, really figure out the depth of that. And there should be enough room.
Okay. Delete. All right. Other comments from, uh, the, uh, gallery. Don't leave anybody out. Okay, from the health perspective, um, should the signage have on there? Um, are you, are the health promotions folks still promoting 10,000 steps or motivational prompts along the trail? For example, I really like the motivational prompts on the U N A North Golf Course. Um, would, would things like that make sense on this trail loop?
Yes.
Okay. So let me put down my sign one here. Oh, man, okay. So motivational prompts are still cool, right?
Yes, yeah.
And do we want to promote, um, how many steps it is around the loop?
Can we do steps and calories as well, or?
Sure, let me just put steps and calories.
Yeah.
Hey, this walk will burn off, uh, your fruit loops you had this morning or kind of thing.
Blue corn mush.
Yeah. Okay, steps and calories. Okay. And I, I can show an example, um, I'll share an example. You guys have probably seen it, but the North Golf, North Golf Course has some really gay prompts, you know, be stronger than your, be stronger than your excuses kind of thing, uh, which I think are really cool. And it ties in there. So, so I got that added there too. So three or four pocket parks, add those after we're done here. So we got an idea there. What else? Would any of this need lighting? Is this a place for lighting or not a place for lighting? And by lighting, we're talking about pedestrian scale lighting. So we're not talking about street lighting that's, you know, 25 feet in the air. We're talking about six to eight foot tall lighting that could be solar, that might illuminate a pocket park. Uh, that could be good for, you know, if it's, um, if it's not, if it's getting dark, but still not too cold to be out, it could be good for that. It could illuminate a section of the trail. Um, does it make sense in here at all? And it may not. It may only make sense to say, well, you know, as a community, we determine that the BIA, um, the BIA track, which is where now? Can't find it. Oh, there it is. We, we've decided that, you know, along, if we get back to this one, this may be the place we want to have lighting around it. We may want to have all the fitness stations around it. That may be our, you know, main fitness year round opportunity, um, because of weather. So you know, we, we can still balance on that, but I'm just throwing out things for you guys to think about.
I think solar lighting would be really cool.
Okay. And on how much of this, the whole upper loop?
I think it would be tough going on the south part. So the upper loop would really be the only place that makes sense if we're to do those low impact, you know, kind of low to the ground ones.
Yeah, just as kind of, uh, outlining the path.
Yeah, that might make sense on the top portion. It might be difficult for the bottom part.
Okay.
And so maybe that might even be a thing of distinguishing the two. The top part is, you know, get your counts in and your calories, but then maybe the bottom part is tracking, you know, getting perspective on the solar system. And I know we had mentioned that the first time.
Yeah.
Be like a night trail. So maybe the top part's the day trail, the bottom part's the night trail. And, you know, just kind of play off those types of things. But I, I think lighting would be beneficial. The place where it really makes sense and we got the feedback is in between the educational trails. Cause you see a lot of people traveling between the schools, but then also walking to bashes and kind of getting your daily needs. It'd be kind of tougher in every other area besides the BIA track. But it might be, make sense to have the lighting, um, being the connectors. So from this trail to educational trail, having little educational things that connect them.
Um, keep in mind that on the south side, uh, that used to be a party, party spot. Because there, there was a road that went all the way to the south side and people would park there. And they would have their, their drinks or whatever. Uh, I was telling Daniel that when we were putting in the post. And we might have to really be careful because we don't want people going to the south side and, you know, having parties and.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So let's talk about where, where do we need barricades for no, no, no motorized access? How are they getting in here? Are they driving from, from up in here all the way down?
They used to. I don't think they do that anymore.
Okay.
There's a big mound right where you see the untitled placement neighborhood access that where kind of eight, the eight, the eight part.
Yeah.
Big hill that you can't really drive around. You have to kind of walk around it.
Okay.
It's a little bit higher. I'm sorry. Um.
It looks like it's right here.
Yeah, right there. There's a big hill or mound. So it's hard for any vehicles to pass.
Okay, so.
Access points are over O D Y by the that's where you see all the cars come from.
All right. So we might need some choke points in here to keep any vehicles from going down this way, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, what, I want to talk about, let's see. What can I use for a barricade? Water is gonna be my barricade for now. So we might want one somewhere in here. I'll clean all this up. Where else we might need choke points? Anything up in here?
They already have some right there by the, uh, West Mesa Housing. They have those big old stone blocks.
Okay.
All of the traffic.
Right here.
Yeah. All of the traffic comes from, um, by the softball field. That's where all the cars have access. And, and you drove with me one time that way.
Yeah.
Followed those roads and that's where they really come from.
Okay. So we might want to block, you know, if that's parking, we may may have to do a barricade in here somewhere or crossing here. Okay. I'm gonna drop another one in there just for the, uh, choke point. I know what that is.
And that was cited within the notes that I had sent out. Somebody had mentioned that benefit.
Okay. So we may have, when we coordinate with parking, we have to block all vehicle access. So what about all these other routes in here? Leonard, you guys were talking about land restoration in the committee. Is this, are these areas like this, uh, would that be eventually be all closed and rehabbed? Or just let nature do it?
Right now, there's, there's really no plans on that area. It's all trust land. So pretty much we have, um, whatever we can do to develop and upgrade or whatever.
Okay. But it could be possible that you could say, well, let's close off the ones that are eroding the most and try to do some, some check dams or whatever to keep the water from eroding down. Um, that's all possible in here, right? So you could make a recommendation that all these other internal routes should be closed and re-vegetated or whatever. So it's a more natural, nicer landscape.
The one concern that, um, was heard from this area is if we run along this south area, along the housing from lighting all the way up towards where it bends up towards O D Y, um, that stretch right there, there's some concern because there, there are dogs within that neighborhood. Um, where most people kind of veer off and, you know, complete their trails where your hand is, right where it was, if you go back. Um, no, back, back up towards the, um, yeah, right there. Where it veers up from where it bends up, right where your hand is, you'll see people go up right there, but that's a deep steep. It's about 20 degrees at the very base. And then you go up, go up. But if you go up a little bit further, that one that cuts across right there, if you go right, um, you'll see a lot of people will take that route because it's more flat. I'm sorry, a little bit more down.
This one.
Yes. Um, so you'll see people access those two points from the base, um, right there's the flat, flatter way of accessing it. And then if you go towards where, um, at the bottom where it kind of curves, um, that's the steep area if, um, at the corner of the housing.
So this is a steep area here, but people don't like to walk here because there's dogs?
Yes.
So, and then you guys are, but also you're also working on a animal control operation that that might take care of that problem, right?
We're, right now, we're waiting on the Navajo Nation Animal Control to start working on the facility.
Okay.
I don't know, three miles north of Crown Point. And the chapter itself is working on its certification. Once we're certified, we're gonna start doing ordinances and zoning.
Okay.
So once we, the part of the ordinance is, it's going to be involving dogs, livestock, uh, those kinds of things. So that should lessen the dog problem.
Okay. So, so would this trail here, um, be of concern if there's a lot of people on this track, you know, cross country, whatever, would that be of concern to these residents here? Is that too close to their property?
Katie?
Hmm. I think where.
To their backyard, this kind of invasion of privacy, in my opinion.
Yeah. But I think when Daniel said where it's not so steep, that's pretty all right because that's what I used to.
So that's 35 feet from the, looks like the fence line of the properties, I'm guessing, right? Or 35 to 50 feet somewhere in the mystery, but that's all you've got for that fence line. So are you suggesting that the trail would come here and then turn this way?
And then keep, oh, not that way. Not that one, not that one. Keep going. Um, if you were to keep going, uh, from the, yeah, go up. And then it would, uh, I'm sorry, can you zoom out a little? Kind of lost my sense of space.
So we came down this way and they should, this is pretty steep here, right?
Yes, but if you cut over right where your hand was, if you, right there, and it goes up and then it connects and you take the left. And then you keep on going up. No, not, no, no, no. Yep, that way. And then it links back up and then that's on the top of the hill. So there's still a lot of decline everywhere south of that. But if you reach the top of it, you're sitting kind of on top of that area. And you won't worry, have to worry much, um, on erosion and things like that. So then it kind of comes up and then lollipops a little bit.
So you're, so, so we would do, just kind of make a note of this. So we would do here. And then we would go up to here. And then contour around on this road.
Yes.
And then it joins back into here.
Yes. Which can then also go back towards that access point. I think there's a trail that kind of veers somewhere down in there.
Mesa, oh, turn. Yeah, I got that. So you're saying they could, you know, come back, back, it can, can connect back as well then?
Yeah. Yeah. There's a little pass that go down there. You'll see it coming right there.
Yeah. Okay. That's, that's kind of a cool idea. Cause I could cross a gear too, right?
Mm hmm.
Okay. Katie, you might have to get out there and play with that and see what works best.
Yeah, I can do that.
Recommendations from you on, on, you know, what makes the most sense for that. Cause if we're close to neighborhoods here and it's a lot of erosion off the slope, then maybe, uh, and we're close to residences, maybe we don't want to be there. And if we had lighting there, that lighting may annoy them anyway, but you know, who knows where the lighting would be. Solar, solar lighting takes a lot to, to actually do its job. So, okay. Um, what else? We are missing anything on this? So we had trash cans on here. And that's probably a question whether or not we'll have, uh, the ability to manage them and maintain them and empty them. So most of our land managers now almost never put trash cans out. It's pretty much pack it in, pack it out, don't leave stuff behind because we know we're going to have people dumping stuff and they're doing it all over now. So think about that. But, but you know, as we move into this, I, I want you to think about if you had a formal trails program that, um, there's no reason why you would not be able to create a, you know, ancestral lands youth program like Zuni and Akama have and Hopi have, where you could have crews out here doing both, um, doing the work on the interpretation, learning history and, and the culture, doing trail work, doing land restoration work. Um, you could probably have a, a summertime youth program for 10 years, trying to get your system up to where you want it to be and have a summer work, work, work program. And that, you know, as we talk about management strategies, I think that's one that Crown Points would be ready to explore and it'd be a great, uh, great seasonal job. Learning trail work gets to, you get your opportunities into the federal system and other organizations as well. So.
And it could possibly just be solved with signage, you know, keep it clean, respect mother earth, whatever. Um, and then eventually transition into the, one of those bigger ventures. And we have these identified spots with benches where we could eventually put something.
Yeah. If you look back at your, your workbook, we had a session on, um, trailhead signage, which covers the rules and regulations and directions. So that might be where you would tell the story about the clan name with a trail that you might have your rules and regulations that dogs on leash and no bikes or no motorized or whatever it is. You'd have that at each one of the trailhead locations. And then at the intersections like here and here, you'd have the directional signage that would say this way to the parking area, this way back to, um, Mesa Housing and this way down to the lower loop. And, um, you know, to be done differently. But what, what those signage looks like, whether it's posts or stone or something else, we'll have that a separate discussion on that. So what are you thinking, Daniel? Were you at a good place on this?
I think so. Um, leave it up.
We can also think about, you talked about connector trail. So, um, the other day you were mentioning that people come off of here. Um, somehow walk towards the other campus?
Yeah. So there's two different ways. If you zoom in by the pocket park and the untitled placement. If you follow this road, it kind of leaks off and then there's a side road right there that runs parallel with it.
This one here, right?
Yeah. If that's where the water line comes in, that's where we could kind of double down and then make sure that, um, you know, there's some type of trail that then would connect to a street crossing right there. You already kind of see one, um, going north to south. But if we go, you know, east to, or west to east, we could then connect it to the way that goes over to N T U. So that's kind of the low impact way. But the majority of the students, high school students, uh, if you go back up towards the parking lot. Um, yeah, they cross over right there. Um, that's the fire station.
Okay. Right, right.
And we had went there with, um, that one student, that one time, Attila.
Yeah, I remember that. We looked at all this stuff here. Yep, I remember that.
And then it goes down. And if you scroll down a little bit more, um, you'll see N T U's campus. That's a big mesa. So that's where they're talking about possibly incorporating the stairs and then making it a challenging workout of like going back down. And then, um, entering the access point to N T U's campus, which.
Yeah, we've seen people coming off. I think we saw them walking this way and coming off the rocks here, right?
Yeah.
This is a path right here.
So that's another opportunity. And that's where, um, one of the comments was saying we need to connect them. So this is the high impact, medium impact way. But then if you follow this trail, it goes to N T U's campus where you have that nice two mile loop, which could then also connect towards low impact BIA track, you know? So.
And you have sidewalks. There's sidewalks here though, right?
Yes.
Um, just to let you know. Right? On that trail from the fire and rescue to N T U campus. On that mesa there, uh, the veterans, Crown Point Veterans Organization, organization has been talking about a veterans park in that area using that, using that mesa. Uh, right now, um, it's kind of stalled out. We don't know what they really want to do. But also food distribution, Navajo Nation Food Distribution is looking for a site and a warehouse. Because where they're at right now is on executive waterland. They don't want to be on there. They want to be on trust land. So they're looking at that site too. So keep that in mind right now. There's really no plans. Yeah, right in that area.
And that could tie in towards like, you know, again, collaborating with the different community entities.
It could be especially with the, um, veterans organization, if they want to park, then you know, they can, uh, utilize the trails.
Yeah, I think that mental health is necessary.
Yeah. I mean, so you could have a whole mental health complex here, mental, uh, the mental health gardens, community garden spaces. Um, there's a really fine publication I've been following called Open Spaces Sacred Places and how you design and work for that. So that, that's kind of a cool idea. Okay. So I'm just going to capture, Daniel, the secondary connector route from this area would be, let's just change that color. Just to get it over here is this, this connector, your idea. Um, basically down around here. And then crossing here. And then we could put in actually a, um, street crossing.
Because of the, um, different facilities that's going to be going up, you have the hotel, you have the wellness center, O D Y building, the new C store, uh, laundry mat. Behavioral health, uh, behavioral department of behavioral and mental health. Um, all these things are going up. There's also talk now about putting in street lights in different areas because of the increased traffic.
Nice. So it's, it, it makes sense that, you know, one of the things we've got to think about, uh, Ms. Perry is, is, you know, if we put a trails in here, um, can they become part of the official, um, transportation network um, within the chapter? So, uh, Veterans Memorial can't decide now, we're going to throw a trail on with, we're going to throw a complex on top of our trail system.
Well.
How, how, that's something we have to work, work, work with you on. Cause I know when I was working in a Zuni project 20 years ago, they had no trail system and there were people dropping down double Y's on top of their pilgrimage routes because no one controlled it. Which is crazy. So how do we make sure that happens with us?
What we can do is, um, since we already had our club C meeting on Wednesday, and I did, uh, inform the other members, committee members, what we're trying to do. I showed them, they had the maps, they looked at it and they approved your trails project. And today, when we went, we had the planning meeting, the chapter planning meeting. We discussed it and the resolution for this project that we're doing here is going to go on to the chapter regular meeting on the 15th. So once that's approved, you know, it's going to be pretty much official.
Okay.
Going to be trails that we're going to be working within the community. The only thing we need to do is have these trails put into the club C manual. Um, because the Navajo Nation delegates, when they're going to fund whatever projects, you want to see the club C manual. So whatever project is going to be funded, it has to be on that manual.
Okay.
So pretty much once we get the, uh, resolution from the chapter house and we put this into the club C manual, you know, nobody's going to be putting trailers and stuff like that.
Good. That's great to hear. Okay.
Uh, I, I want to share this really quick and I'll stop presenting, but it's important to note that this trail and the parts we're looking at, they all fall on Navajo troubled trust land. So I think if we have it planned within there, we should be able to, you know, have it, you know, represented. The only one that falls outside of it is the BIA track, which is on the BIA leased land, which we would work with, uh, Mr. Sosi. And then the educational trail is this Navajo Nation land, which I believe is now under N T U's part, part control. Um, so, so it would just be getting it into our master plan, which we're going to be doing pretty soon too. So it's possible for us to get it implemented and have it part as our campus as well. So I wanted just to kind of show that these trails that we're focusing on are at least within, um, single land ownership.
Yeah. TP trails is the one that's a problem for us.
Yes.
Well, the West Mesa trail is all trust land. That's no problem.
Yeah.
The BIA track, the one that's, um, that one, that's on executive waterland. Remember also the net college is on executive waterland.
Over here.
Yeah. And then part of the, um, TP trail is on executive waterland. So we have to work with BIA on those areas. But at the same time, club C is authorized to work with the whole community. If it, even if it involves the executive waterland, the free land, um, trust land, allotment, it's still under the chapter, club C, um, track. It sounds messed up, but that's how it is.
Okay.
So Daniel, what we've got to, so we'll take this map, I think, uh, we, we should recap now how this went and, uh, hear from our, our guest and if, uh, they thought we're crazy or not doing this. And, uh, but I think we take the map, it up, we, we clean it up. And then we got to figure out how we put that into a, um, some sort of a presentation that can be shared by our other community members. And you can see, well, you know, this is the, um, uh, going back to my map real quick, um, where did I go? So the, you know, this is the towering house overlook and here's, you know, a picture of the landscape. Maybe we could point out the features on that and why that's significant to the, to the chapter. Uh, you know, here's a story you like to tell here. Here's a story we want to tell here. Here's what we mean by a pocket park. Um, so people that could look at this thing then would, would, uh, easily, um, easily make sense. Oh, this is what they're trying to do with this trail system.
Yeah. And, and for all of our guests, that was kind of their intent after we didn't receive much feedback from the work session books that we had done. Um, we received maybe about four. Uh, so this was our strategy and hopefully we can mock these up and then have kind of the feedback that we've gotten from our first three rounds of data collection. And then have visuals that people could talk about whether that's setting up poster boards or that bashes. Um, you know, whatever it might be, you know, I think we could do that. And I think I could go out and take the pictures and mock up certain things. But that'd be the intent from here is having a deliverable, which can then be commented on and people, it seems like people are more quick to criticize certain things. Oh, you should have done it this way rather than, uh, maybe think about doing it this way. So that's what we're hoping to do from this and have outcomes that we can then have that last layer. Because it's nice to have Caitlin and Leonard and various community members participate, but we want, you know, wider audience too. So that's kind of the outcome that we'd like to see from these. But by all means, any of our guests, if you want to comment on anything or make any suggestions, um, we'd really appreciate it.
Or criticism.
I just have a quick question. I have a question.
Yes.
The, uh, the stations in Mescalero Apache seem to not really be working. What are some examples of those that are not popular exercise stations?
Mescalero, when they, so the one that doesn't work there, first of all, it's not near anyone. So what we've learned through all their work and, and, and parks and trail planning, if you live within a half mile of a park and trail, you're more likely to use it. So that includes, I think, fitness stations. So Mescalero Apache, the one they put in there, um, is really, if you know the community at all, it's on the road that goes, uh, it's on the main road going from basically, uh, Tulare Rosa to, to Rio Rosso. And on the turnoff to going into the casino, it's like a two mile road and they put a trail back in there. And the fitness stations along that trail. So the people who might use it could be, um, hotel guests or employees that could be walking or riding bikes to get to work. But it's not near any one of the communities or villages within Mescalero that would use that. The other problem was that they, uh, decided to use some of their features made out of, uh, wood. And, uh, when I, I was, it's been years since I worked on their, on the project there, but they were splintered up pretty quickly. And, and the weather and no one's going to use it if they're, if the wood is deteriorating. So they weren't being used there. Now even in Albuquerque, on my daily commute to work, there's a couple in a, in a little urban forest park. And I'm, you there, been riding my bike through that park for 10 years, twice a day. And I can, I can probably count on both hands, how many people I've ever seen using those fitness stations. In, in a, in a community park, which has a dog park nearby. So, um, it's, it's a tough call. I think it's, I think if you're going to do fitness stations, I don't know Sally, if you have any in Cuba yet or not, but if I did them, I'd want to make it, you know, specific to my audience. So if I've got a senior center, community center nearby, I'd want to put in some stations that's directly relate to that audience, that population that can get to them easy and use them and, and get, and get to them. If it takes travel to get to them, I don't see that they're a good investment. Now they're, the companies will tell you otherwise, but I've been to their shows and asked them, show me the data of how many people who are physically inactive using your equipment and, and they don't have it. Uh, and you look at their pictures, um, you know, they're all fitness stars using it. And that's not who we're, as public health professionals. Uh, and, and, and me, it's, it's part, it's my kind of passion in this world and trail planning. But I want to, I want to attract the physically inactive people to be out and, and using stuff. We, our goal is to get everyone physically active. And so we want to attract and invite those who may not be active onto our trails and our open spaces and get them comfortable with outdoor experiences. So putting this heavy equipment out there and then if I was overweight trying to do a sit up in public, I'm not going to use it. It's just, that's just the way we are. We don't want to be embarrassed in public that way. So that's my, uh, two cents on that. Mescalero isn't a bad location. Um, and I don't think they really thought it through who their users were and really didn't do that deep dive on, uh, your local demographics. That help answer for you?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else?
Hey, Daniel.
Yes.
Hey, Daniel. I have some workbooks to give to you. So.
Okay, cool. I could share them by the next one. Um, and maybe we could revisit again, but eventually, you know, it'd be nice to have access points too, by the church area, um, Attila. Um, that was something that Katie brought up, but I know that's kind of a little bit off, but somewhere down the road, I think it'd be that we do see a lot of people coming into the area from there. Um, does anybody else have any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to make a comment to Sheldon. Sheldon, that would be a good question to ask your group. Um, so for those of you on, on the call, Sheldon, uh, received a fellowship to be a part of the walking university. And he's on calls with them every week. And it's an opportunity to ask, uh, others about their experiences as well as the people that are. And it's an opportunity to ask, uh, others about their experiences as well as the people that are, um, leading the, the, the university. And so that might be something you could ask them about the use of the fitness stations. In my experience, people don't use them, uh, even at U N M around the, uh, around the field there, they have fitness stations. Nobody uses them that I've seen, but I don't have the data in front of me. But, um, I'm just suggesting that maybe that's something you would ask your, your group in the Walking College.
Yeah, I think anecdotally, our evidence shows us, we see, we don't, I mean, Sally doesn't see it. I don't see it. Um, and they're so expensive and there's a lot of maintenance to keep those operational. And if they're outside in our extreme conditions weather, that's a lot of upkeep. So that's why I like the ones that are kind of stretching and, uh, balance oriented. There's lots of moving parts and it's like, okay, I can go stretch a little bit and, um, we may want to be thinking about, uh, you know, as, as this gets going, a better model might be the walking club program that Cuba made so popular years ago was, that was incredibly successful of having a walking coordinator. And, you know, you had the half mile loop here and the quarter mile loop there and one individual was taking all these people out walking and that changed behavior in that community.
We had that too. We had a working, um, health group that would run and walk at lunchtime too. So.
Okay.
And that included people from the hospital, from the university, students, a lot of different people.
Good.
So the evidence shows that social support like that really, really works. And so I think that that's something to always keep in mind. And whether it's four people or the family or whether it's a group of, you know, 10 people or so, it doesn't really matter. It's the being together and the supporting each other and saying, okay, I'm going to come by and knock on your door. We're going to go take a walk or whatever.
Uh, just one thing I want to add. The, um, the Wellness Center facility is complete. We got this cer- cer- certificate of occupation.
Wow.
So right now, we're going to be transferring the building to the, um, Navajo Nation Special Diabetes Program. They're going to be running that, um, facility. And from what I hear, they have programs that they're going to be involved in running, walking, um, food, preparation demonstrations, educational classes. So they're pretty much going to be involved in this and I'm for, for sure they'll be utilizing the trails.
Yeah. And, uh, that's standing to hear Leonard, that one of the things we want to do for our plan, as I pointed out earlier is, is, um, we completed a community health profile for our projects because I believe that everyone, every trail project in the country and open space project should have a public health goal attached to it. Uh, it's not just about putting a trail from A to B. It's finding out who lives nearby, how can they use a trail? How do we design it to, um, for youth? How do we design it for seniors? How do we design it for underserved populations? But always thinking about who the user is when we design stuff. So, uh, with that in mind, you know, understanding, um, the, the health outcomes you expect and want to see in Crown Point, you know, our trail plan, our programming, our promotion should all be designed around helping you achieve your health outcomes for, for Crown Point. And I think.
I have a question for Daniel.
Place to do that.
I have a question for Daniel.
Yeah.
Um, since you're the head of the, um, Guardian Angels, are you going to be patrolling these, um, trails?
We'll figure it out. Training in on my punching bag. Tie you up to the water tower and get my puncher.
We're going to have drone patrols.
Yeah. Well, I want to be cognizant of time. We have, you know, we're a little bit over, um, of what we had scheduled. Um, are, are there any other comments or input? If not, you know, I think we're going to try to plan to do this every Tuesday from three to five. Uh, next one we're going to be focusing on is the education trail, uh, which I know that again, this would have some health impacts. Um, we're talking about the flooding, possibly using on the space to do community gardening or, um, ways of preventing that. Um, there's a lot of, uh, need for, um, that trail and connecting our community, which helps reduce, you know, use of automobiles. So I think it's, uh, going to be a, a important trail to discuss and it was the number one recommended trail by all of our survey, um, participants as the one that, um, deserves the most attention. So, um, if it's cool with everybody, I'd like to possibly schedule that again for next Tuesday from three to five.
I'll vote green.
Tomorrow.
What's that?
I will put on an invite tomorrow or before Thursday in that meeting for next time.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you for the invitation.
No, thank you guys for sitting in and participating. We really appreciate, you know, all eyes on it and you know, you guys have your perspective on Cuba and everything else. So again, thank you for your team and all the, all the input you guys gave.
Thank you.
Say hi to, uh, Dr. Cozal for me, please, Sally. All right.
I will, I will. I'll tell him hello.
Okay. Thank you guys.
Patient.
Bye. See ya.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye bye.